Many ladies and citizens of the United States of America, and here's the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dangert.
Mayor Steem.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Jordal.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number one is the option of the agenda with the addition. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item two is a motion approving minutes from December 7, 2015, and truth in taxation hearing minutes of December 8. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number three is awards. We have a number of awards for retirees tonight, and we will start with Tim Brady. Tim isn't here, but Stephen, would you like to tell us a few? I think most of us know Tim pretty well. I know he rides motorcycles.
Yeah, sure. Just in general, we had three retirees in the Public Works Department. Those retirees were Tim Brady from Engineering, RJ Bergstrom from Sewer Maintenance, and Jim Walz from the Street Department. All three of those employees were long-term employees with the city, and it has been difficult to replace them. You know, any time that an employee retires, you can't write down everything that they know. They take a great deal of information with them, so it's been hard to replace any of the employees that leave through the Public Works. But those three folks retired in 2015 after many years of service with the city, and we appreciate all those years of service that we received from them.
And do we, do, Ben, do we give Stephen the plaques, or? Okay, I will. I don't know if Jim rides motorcycles. I know RJ does, and Tim does. Something about those guys in engineering.
Yep, we'll make sure that these get to them.
All right, thank you. And Gail Heimer from the library. Ann?
Yes, Gail Heimer gave us many years at the Austin Public Library and did take retirement so that she can pursue her career with music. So she's been enjoying time both in Iowa and in Minnesota, performing in the area, pursuing her flute playing and singing. While she was at the library, she was responsible for our automation system, which is the blood and guts of the library's automation, how we check in books, how we manage patrons, how we track materials. And she ran all of that in addition to many other duties. And as you may remember, in fact, when she retired, we did replace her with two full-time people.
Okay, thank you. Well, why don't you take her plaque then, and you'll see that she gets it. And then last, and definitely not least, is Travis Hickley, and I'm going to ask Brian to say a few words, but I worked with Travis for a number of years. Actually, he got my job after I re- well, it went to Dave and then Travis, so I know he did a very good job there, and I've worked with him for a number of years, and I'm surprised, he seems like the young guys are going now. You always be a young guy to meet, TJ. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Travis Hickley worked for the Austin Police Department for 28 years. He started out working nine years patrol, night shift. He then set the bar very high, becoming a school resource officer, where he was up at the high school for 11 years. His last eight, he was a detective, and those last five, he worked for the Southeast Minnesota Narcotics Task Force. Again, TJ is missed. He had a lot of experience from those 28 years, but we are surviving. TJ without you, but obviously, again, he is missed. I know a lot of the guys still try to stay in contact with him, and again, I'd like to thank him for his 28 years of dedicated service to the city of Austin.
I know that the police department is like one big family. Travis, why don't you come up here? We'll shake your hand, and I'll give it to you myself. I'd like-
Congrats.
Southwest.
Thank you, Travis.
Sell your house here?
I gotta, I mean, I'll mention one thing in particular. I got a complaint in the neighborhood about TJ, Southwest, that we're having, just fits with the house, a party house, and I mentioned it to Brian, and he mentioned it to TJ, and about 10 days later, they did a search warrant, they busted a bunch of people for drugs, and I know Doc said the neighborhood is pretty quiet ever since, and they're big fans of the police department now, and I'm a big fan of TJ's because of that. Excellent job on that one. Thank you. Okay, now we go to, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under public hearing, number five is a resolution, public hearing on a five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Dangert.
What do you think, Council?
Is the five-year capital improvement plan projections for 2016 through 2020. In total, just under $90 million of projects being proposed, but again, those are highly dependent on the funding sources, so if the funding source does not come through as planned, then the project does not come through unless they bring it back to council for further review. By approving the proposed plan, it sets in motion and authorizes staff and department heads to get the 2016 projects started, completed, hopefully done by the end of the year, and also sets in motion for 2017 through 2020 as a planning purpose, what they plan on doing. But again, that's not set in stone, because a lot of times departments will adjust those going forward once we get to those years. But again, tonight, this is a culmination of several months of working with department heads, and in total, $89,596,000 worth of projected improvements.
Council, any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution-
It's a public hearing, Your Honor.
Pardon?
Public hearing, Your Honor.
Oh, it's a public hearing. Anybody here tonight that want to address this? Okay, Council?
I just want to thank Tom and the department heads for doing this work so that we are really on track with our planning.
Good job. All right, then we need a resolution for item number five.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, number six is a resolution approving the tax levy for 2016. Comments?
We had our truth in taxation meeting on December 8, and at that point in time, we proposed a 2016 payable tax levy in the amount of $4,900,000, and at that meeting, council made a recommendation to forward that to council for your official approval tonight.
Council, you did a lot of work on this. Any questions? This is our main job during the year, I think, is getting this tax levy and our budget ready, so a lot of thought and work went into this by our, by staff, but also by council. If not, we need a resolution for item number six.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seven is a resolution on the same track of opting the budget for the year 2016. Tom?
As also was discussed on December 8, we've got a proposed budget for 2016 of $29,952,386. Some of the prime, or some of the new drivers for the 2016 budget, basically, a lot of things we did this year, but we've also added four employees to the mix, two in the police department, one in parks maintenance, and one in the nature center. So with that, that again was also recommended at the December 8 hearing for approval tonight.
Once again, council, did a lot of the work on this. I'd be surprised if there were questions, but questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number eight, I believe, is a resolution authorizing cancellation of certain ad valorem tax levies. Tom?
And a couple bond issues the city of Austin has. We have the authority to levy a debt service tax onto the citizenry to help pay for the principal and interest payments on that. However, we've got two bond issuances, the 2006 A Economic Development Bonds and the 2010 Utility Revenue Bonds, that we have an alternate source of revenue paying it, meaning the Hormel Foundation is paying the 2006 bonds for the first institute expansion, and then assessments on the Lansing Township annexation are paying for the principal and interest on that. So at this point in time, I'd request council pass a resolution canceling that tax on the citizenry because we have another source of revenue to pay for it. Council?
If there are no questions, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is a resolution granting 2016 licenses for sale of hard liquor. On sale, Sunday hard liquor on sale, Sunday wine on sale, and three-two beer on and off sale. Ms. Castle, please.
Yes, these are the lists of all of the on sales and then the three-two beer on and off sales in the city of Austin. We just had one change on the three-two beer on sale. China Star is doing a reorganization in their ownership, so I would request we remove that from this resolution, and then that will be brought forth when they go through their licensing process.
Council, any questions? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 11 is a resolution accepting the Hormel Foundation grant for the nature center project. Kim?
Skip number 10, Your Honor.
Skip 10? Oh, I'm sorry. Setting the mileage reimbursement rate for 2016. Tom?
The IRS has come out with their federal mileage reimbursement rate for 2016. Currently, it's 57 and a half cents per mile, but it's being reduced to 54 cents per mile according to the IRS. It probably has a lot to do with the low price of gas. Our policy at the city of Austin has always been to have council approve the federal rate for any travel that staff does for the city of Austin, for use of their own vehicles.
Comments? We need a resolution.
I think there must be an error in the wording when it says increase to 54. Probably should say decrease to 54 cents on the resolution.
Okay, yep, the resolution should say decrease to 54 cents.
With that change, we need a motion.
Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 11 is a resolution accepting Hormel Foundation grant for the nature center project. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. You will see that we requested from the Hormel Foundation $5 million, and we will get that in installments, and so our first one has arrived, and we would like you to accept that, please.
Me and Greg were out there today, and they were doing, it's changed a lot from the last time I was out there. I almost drove through the wrong entrance. Well, I didn't almost, but it's, they're moving pretty fast on that. Anyway-
Mayor, by passing this resolution, also, you're approving all $5 million, so not just the first million, but all of it, so we don't come back with you in installments.
Okay. Any comments, questions? We need a resolution for a-
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 12 is a resolution accepting Hormel Foundation grants. Tom?
The allocation process from the Hormel Foundation was officially released last week, or a couple weeks ago. In total, $7.8 million was donated from the Hormel Foundation to the community, which is up from the $7.2 million in 2015. The allocations that were awarded to the city of Austin amounted to $475,000, I'm sorry, amounted to $510,719, which is an increase of roughly $35,000 over the $475,000 we received in 2015. Additionally, one of the items funded was the slide replacement at the pool, which is an estimated cost of 400 grand. They approved $100,000 in 2016, and then in 17 and 18, it'll be an additional $150,000 each year, so that in 2018, when Kim's ready to replace that pool, we've got the money stocked up to do such. But again, very fortunate to have the Hormel Foundation in town and very thankful that they're willing to expend that much dollars within the city of Austin.
Council, I think sometimes we take the Hormel Foundation for granted, but we'd be a different city without them. I mean, this is 7.8, but if you look at all the other things they're doing with-
Five million.
It's absolutely amazing, and I know sometimes they think, they feel like they're overlooked a little bit, but certainly, they're always in our minds, and we certainly appreciate what they do for us. Need a resolution?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 13 is a resolution accepting gifts to the city. We do this every meeting. We need a, need a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 14 is a motion approving the continuation of the voluntary furlough policy for 2016. Trish? Oh, there you are.
The city hasn't had in place since July of 2009 a voluntary furlough policy, although it's not utilized a lot. Department heads had reviewed it at our staff, staff meeting last week, and they liked the idea of having the guidelines in place if and when those are needed during the year, so we don't have to come back to council later. So your approval tonight is just a continuation of the guidelines as they were in 2015, no changes.
Has that been, anybody utilize that recently, or?
Not, it's probably been one or two employees over the last couple of years. Prior to that, since 2009, when it was put in place, I think we're about 1,200, 1,300 hours used for that.
It's really nice that we have one if needed, though.
Yeah.
Questions? If not, we need a motion for 14.
So moved. Second.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 15 is a resolution approving an ICM agreement with SKB Environmental. Mr. Lang?
Yes, over the last few years, we've been accepting leachate from the SKB Austin landfill. We accept that at our wastewater treatment plant, and like all of our other ICM agreements, there are requirements set forth for that material or that leachate that we do accept. They need to meet certain requirements and testing procedures. And this year, though, some of those procedures include pollutant level limits, establishing flow limits, identifying prohibited wastes, and then also establishing a fee structure. Everything is very similar with this current agreement with only a few changes. Those changes would include decrease in some of the testing rates for some of the pollutants. We were testing for a wide variety of materials, and some of those were showing up as non-detect or not detecting at all, so we've reduced the testing rate for some of those. And then we've also increased the disposal rate from $20 per load to $35 per load, so there will be more income coming in for the load discharge. And this is a three-year agreement proposed to expire December 31 of 2018 with SKB Environmental, and we'd recommend approval.
Council, any comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
16 is a resolution accepting a donation of real property. Stephen?
Yes, I've been working with Mr. Charlie Faver over probably the last year, talking with him about a proposed flood control project in his area that council is familiar with. This would be the 21st Street Southwest flood levy. And in working with Mr. Faver throughout this process, there's, there's a map identified in your handout. Mr. Faver owns what is called Sun Valley Third Edition, and it is an undeveloped section of property, again, located at the intersection of 21st Street and 8th Avenue Southwest behind the fairgrounds. The area highlighted in yellow is what Mr. Faver currently owns. Some of the other parcels have been subdivided and sold off to adjacent property owners. But through this process, Mr. Faver has indicated a possible interest in donating the property, so we moved forward with an appraisal that came in at $118,000, 800, excuse me, $118,887 for the property. Mr. Faver has elected to donate that property to the city of Austin for a flood control levy and retention basin in this area. A couple of the terms of the donation would include completing the closing of the property prior to December 31 of 2015, so getting it completed here in the next couple of weeks. The city would be responsible for paying the 2015 property taxes, which are approximately $372. And then, we would like to look at vacation of some of the public right of way in that area to make way for the flood control project. So with all of that, I would recommend accepting the donation from Mr. Faver, and greatly appreciate his cooperation with this project.
Thank you. If there are no questions, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
17 is a motion approving of appointments to the various boards and commissions on the city. Does anybody in the council have any questions on these or any objections if we do this? I'll read through them, but any objections if we do them all at once instead of separate motions? Okay. Ivan Pollak to the Austin Sustainability Task Force, term expiring 12/31/18. Jay Letts to the Austin Sustainability Task Force, term expiring 12/31/18. Jim Weber to the Fire Commission, and a lot, most of these are reappointments, but their terms are up. Jim Weber to the Fire, the Fire Civil Service Commission, term expiring 12/31/18. Miguel Garate to the Human Rights Commission, term expiring 12/31/18. Andre Goodlett to the Human Rights Commission, term expiring 12/31/18. Leah Culver to the Human Rights Commission, term expiring 12/31/18. Nathan Ennis to the Library Board, term expiring 12/31/18. Barry Irish to the Library Board, term expiring 12/31/18. Jody Krieger to the Library Board, term expiring 12/31/18. Bob Wilson to the Park and Recreation Board, term expiring 12/31/18. Rick Rimmer to the Planning Commission, term expiring 12/31/19. Laura Ramirez to the Police Civil Service Commission, term expiring 12/31/18. Larry Mouse to the Port Authority, term expiring 12/31/21. Sean K. Martin to the Human Rights Commission, term expiring 12/31/16. Greg Simms to the Planning Commission, term expiring 12/31/19. Howard Nepp to the Cable TV Committee, term expiring 12/31/17. Howard Nepp to the pillar of the city, to the pillars of the city committee, term expiring 12/31/17. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. 18 is a resolution declaring property at 401 A Street Northeast. They have it as structured. Do we have any questions on this property? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dangert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 18 is a res- wait a minute, did I just do that?
Yes.
Okay, 19 is two motions granting the Planning and Zoning Department the authority to remove junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations, 105 13th Street Northeast, the Landair property. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B 808 5th Avenue Northwest, the Dirksen property. We need a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is the agenda tonight. Are there any citizens present tonight that wish to address the compliance? I don't care if it was on the agenda or not. You can address us on anything if anybody wants to address us. If not, we are going to report that recommendation, final one of the year. We'll start with Judy.
Um, yes, I attended the chamber board meeting last week, and Chancellor Rosenstein from Minskew came down and wanted to visit with some of the business owners and industry people after the meeting, so quite a few stayed, and it was, he gave a very interesting report about how talent-challenged Minnesota plus other states are getting with, with people retiring that have, you know, kind of grown into their talent, similar to what you, you guys have said about your retirees. They know so much, and they leave, and it's just hard to replace. So he was talking, told us some other things about like 1.3 million Minnesotans will be retiring in the next, you know, five years or so, and there's going to be about 8% less high school kids. So, but the challenge is, is finding the talent to, to help our industry and our businesses and our departments. So he was mainly wanting to pick people's brains around southern Minnesota about what can Minskew institutions do to help us fill positions and find people to work for us. So it was a very good discussion, very interesting information. And, and then the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Met, and we are going to be doing some fundraising this, after the first of the year for the, to raise funds for our organization to benefit veterans and servicemen that are serving and their families. So look for those coming up. We'll be doing a breakfast at the American Legion, and then, for the first time, we'll be trying a beanbag tournament out at the armory inside, and are hoping to get a lot of people from the surrounding area to come out and support Beyond the Yellow Ribbon.
Thanks, Judy. Commissioner. Steve?
Nothing to report.
Sir?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Just a couple, just a couple things. As to echo what the mayor said about thanking the Hormel Foundation, it's important maybe to remind the public as well that there is a public fundraising component for the nature center, so that generous donation to the nature center isn't all that they need. So Kim, that's going on right now. And now people can get more information on the city website or through the Hormel Nature Center about what, what they can do to help. And just a reminder that pillars of the city applications can still be sent in by anybody can suggest. And lastly, Paint the Town Pink registration is open for plunging for pink and for fishing for a cure and maybe some other stuff. So check out, did you go to the Hormel Institute? There's a link, is there a link from our website yet to Paint the Town Pink, Ann? We can do that. So you can get more information on what's going on with Paint the Town Pink, because that's going to be coming up soon. Thank you.
And you're going in?
I am not. I'm clapping for Judy.
Steve's going to.
I'm volunteering. I'm volunteering to be there that day.
We'll be taking the pontoon out and jumping off a pontoon.
Yeah, if we don't get some ice, we might have to change a few things.
Yeah, we might have to make some ice this year.
All right.
I'd just like to recognize Charlie and Lois Faver one more time for their generous donation to the city. That's it. I just want to thank council staff and the citizens for a good 2015.
Thank you. And Greg, do we have any?
Yeah, staff did meet with folks from MINDOT and SEH who's helping them on a I-90 corridor study. We're looking at the exits along I-90, our bridge replacements, so if there's any interest from constituents out there that want to comment on that, that feedback certainly is welcome, and we'll look through that process as we go along and replace some bridges and do some aesthetic updates for the community, so feedback is good, and I think both Holly and Brian have something as well.
Start with Holly.
I wanted to thank Lonnie Scaliki for eight years on the planning commission. He just resigned this year, and as you know, land use issues can be controversial, and I just appreciate his patience, his preparation, and his dedication on the planning commission. And in turn, he wanted to thank the council for working with the planning commission as well, and said it was a pleasure working with you. One other thing we have for the comprehensive plan, we have a survey now on the website online, try to generate some interest prior to our public meetings, and then also maybe access some people who wouldn't ordinarily attend a meeting in person, and that should be on our, I think that's also on our Facebook page and is linked on our city website as well. Thank you.
Right.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to remind you that Sergeant Kim Lenz obtained a grant from the Walmart Corporation, and there's going to be a shop with a hero tomorrow night at Walmart. 50 underprivileged kids and children will have the opportunity to get a $50 gift card and shop for their siblings or themselves for Christmas. All the kids are being provided by Mauer County Health and Human Services, social workers, and school, social workers both in Austin and in Mauer County, so it will brighten at least 50 children's Christmas this year.
I'd just like to reiterate it as far as the foundation. I mean, if there's one thing that, when I go to different things and other organizations are really jealous of that Austin has that they don't, it's the Hormel Foundation, and they're always wondering how they can get- get something like that. I don't think, I don't know if there's another foundation in the state that does for their city what the Hormel Foundation does for us. We're very fortunate to have them. Also, I'd like to mention that Dolores Hemley has passed recently. She was a third ward council member from 1993 to 1996. She had one term. I didn't know Ms. Hemley, but I knew who she was, and I know she was a good councilperson. I don't know if there's anybody here that worked with her, maybe David did. But we certainly, our condolences go out to our family and friends on that. With that, we need a motion to adjourn until January 4th, 2016, at 5:00 PM.
So moved.
5:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll see you next year.
Thank you.